Good afternoon. It is September twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. It is now five-thirty P M. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And I should please rise for the invocation and pledge of allegiance from Mr. George Mortimer.
Father, thank you. Thank you for the love that you've shown us through our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. And God, thank you from the very foundations of time itself. You knew that we would be meeting here tonight, Lord, and that you have gathered us for a special purpose. And the Father, I ask you to fill this place today with your Holy Spirit, that we may be able to have that civil discourse to talk things through, make sure that we are all, when we leave here today, on the same page, Father, both community, both council, and also with every member of staff and everyone that works here in the city of Orange. Thank you for giving us the privilege to serve here in this great town. Thank you for the privilege to live here and to raise our children and raise our families. God, I ask your blessings upon each and every one that's here tonight, our whole community, each and every one that's with us on council and staff. Lord, just be with them. And Father, for our police and fire, I ask you to put a hedge of protection around them each and every day, because, Lord, they sacrifice for us so that we can have the lives that we want to live. Thank you for your love. Thank you for your care. For it's in Jesus' holy name that I do pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, Mr. Mortimer. On to item three. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one-two-zero-zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas, have been met in relation to all minutes impending ordinance and resolutions on this agenda, and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna? Ms. Salter? Mr. Childs? Mr. Chandler? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Birch? Okay, motion passes on to item four. Citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name I have on my list is Ms. Dawn Burley. Please come forward, state your name and address, and you have three minutes. Thank you.
I'm Dawn Burley, and I'm with GOALS, the Greater Orange Area Literacy Service, located at five-twenty West Decatur Avenue in Orange. And I'm here to talk, speak about GOALS because September is Literacy Month, the National Literacy Month, and reading is needed in every part of our lives, from the ability to read a job application to being able to read a utility bill. To be employable now requires a person to have a college degree. For those who are homeschooled, they still need to obtain a GED in order to meet the recommendation of higher education. Of those entering the program, twenty-nine percent are less than a third-grade reading level, according to the two thousand and twenty-two Annual Member Statistical Report. Workers who have less education than a high school diploma have the lowest median weekly earnings, three times less than those with the highest level of education. Incarcerated individuals who participate in correctional education programs are forty-three percent less likely to re-offend than inmates who do not. On the adult literacy scale, Texas and specifically Orange County ranks below national average. Forty-three percent of adults with the lowest level of literacy live in poverty compared to only four percent of those with the highest level of literacy. About fifty percent of immigrants in the United States lack a high school education and proficient English skills. We teach English as a second language and then encourage them to study for their GED. And in one case, we have a gentleman who had an engineering degree in his country, but when he came here, he couldn't speak English, had to go through ESL, is now going through the GED program so he can go back to college to get an engineering degree again. GOALS is a nonprofit, tax-exempt, adult literacy program with three main programs. We prepare students to earn a GED, teach reading and writing to those reading below a sixth-grade level, which is what we call our ABE, or Adult Basic Education. And at this point right now, we have a twenty-four-year-old young man whose goal is to learn how to read so eventually, when he can get a job and get married and have a child, he can read to that child. When he came to us eight weeks ago, he barely knew his alphabet. And now he can write his name and write "I am" in his name. And teach, we also teach English to those whose primary language is not English, which is not always saying that we're helping people that speak Spanish. We have somebody who's from France learning how to speak English. There's a gentleman, I cannot name, I cannot pronounce the country that he is from. I did not even know the country existed till he came through our doors. I can't even pronounce the young man's name. I call him Mr. Yu. He's from Africa. And like I said, I cannot even pronounce the name of his country that I didn't know existed, but he's there so he could learn, so that he can come back again on a visa when this one expires. So, but we also teach, our society is dependent upon informed citizens, and the ability to read is necessary to be informed. So we think there's a vital need to reach those who are undereducated and help them live a better life through our programs. We provide all materials for free, for the student and for the tutors. We usually have forty students a year, give or take, and their ages, their ages range from sixteen to fifty-five most of the time. We've already exceeded forty students this year. And it's, we still have a couple more months, and I have people coming in every day. We are looking for tutors. Tutoring can be at the office located at five-twenty West Decatur Avenue in Orange, at the library, or any public location. It can never happen at the student or the tutor's home. Tutoring is usually one hour at a time, twice a week, and we supply the lesson plans. We are open to all residents in Orange County. Most of our clients right now are from the city of Orange. We do have suggested training sessions which are offered online for the tutor's convenience and are free. We do require the tutor to track meeting times and progress with the student and to submit those long log sheets either in person or via email. This helps us track the student's progress and meet requirements for grants. We do ask the tutor to commit to at least six months of training, and that is our biggest drawback right now. And what's slowing us down is the need for tutors, because I was not aware of how widespread illiteracy was in Orange until I started at GOALS. And it has literally broken my heart to see these people coming in wanting to learn to read. I had a sixty-year-old woman who wanted to come in just so she could read her Bible on Wednesday nights at Bible study. So, these are the, it's not people who want, like, you know, who are asking for a handout. They're asking for a hand up. So please keep that in mind as we continue honoring National Literacy Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Benny Rhodes.
My name's Benny Rhodes. I reside at seventeen-sixty-six Huntsman Street, Orange, Texas. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and city council, and fellow citizens. Today we pause to observe National POW MIA Recognition Day. Some people don't know what these letters stand for. POW is prisoner of war. This is one of our American service personnel that have been captured by a foreign country and being held in prison. We know where most of them are because the enemy lets us know that they've got all these people. MIA is missing in action. This is somebody that was one of our service personnel that went on a mission or a patrol and was never seen again. So the POW MIA flag represents both of these situations. It's a solemn reminder that some of our nation's heroes have not yet returned home. More than eighty-one thousand American service members remain unaccounted for in foreign countries, dating back to World War II. They were prisoners of war, missing in action, sons, daughters, fathers, and mothers. Patriots who answered the call and never came back. These brave men and women sacrificed everything for our freedom. Their families here endured decades of unanswered questions, empty chairs at the table, and painful uncertainty and not knowing their fate. And yet, they wait with hope and with resolve. We, as a grateful nation, have a duty to ensure that they were never forgotten. Today, we affirm that sacred promise to bring them home, no matter how long it takes, no matter how far we must go. I was stationed in Korea, Osan, Korea. About four years ago, the North Korean government allowed our, what's called BPR, body part retrieval crews to go in and bring back bodies, pieces of bodies. You know, most of them are just going to be skeletons and fingers and whatever. But anyway, they allowed them to do that, and there was several hundred have been identified from their remains through DNA. And that's how long it took. The war ended in nineteen fifty-three. So that's how long it's taken. And we have people, service members scattered all over the world in the same situation. As members of the veterans of foreign wars, we advocate fiercely for a full accounting of POWs and MIAs. We stand with the families. We work with our government partners. And we'll never stop until every missing hero is brought home. At this time, I ask for a moment of silence in honor of those who remain missing, those who endured captivity, and the families who are still carrying the burden of uncertainty. Thank you, and may we never forget, and may our commitment to our missing heroes never stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we have Ms. Kelly Case.
Kelly Case, four-six-seven-one-eight, I age ten, East Winnie, Texas. And mainly, I'm here to thank y'all. Y'all have done some help with some staffing in the shelter, which really helps with the phone answering and referral to rescues and things like that, which deflects some of your intake. I've gotten six animals recently from there, so that's great. And there's still work to be done, obviously. The ordinance changes that put in some of the state laws that have been enacted, but not locally, as well as trap neuter and release. But y'all have made some progress, and it's visible, and thanks for that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. Tommy Henry.
Tommy Henry, two-zero-one-eighth street. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. My name is Tommy Henry. I'm here on behalf of the Orange Municipal Police Association. We are currently engaging in contract negotiations with the city. Although a tentative agreement was initially reached with our membership, ultimately voted against the ratification after learning that the fire associate had been offered a five-point-eight percent raise. This figure of five-point-eight percent was shared with us directly in conversation with the city manager, who indicated that our original total compensation package was equivalent to that amount. In light of this information, the decision to reject the tentative agreement was driven solely by our desire to secure straightforward five-point-eight percent cost of living, the same increase reported extended to the fire association. In response, city manager offered us a five percent raise falling short of the standard that was extended to the fire association. We also understand that forty-five-hundred is being added to our annual salary, and we're grateful for that. However, it's important to clarify that this amount comes from last year's contract, where it was issued as one-time payments. By contrast, the fire association received a similar amount last year, but theirs was incorporated into their hourly pay, making it permanent, making it a permanent increase to our compensation structure, to their compensation structure. We want to be clear that we are not here to be confrontational. We respect the negotiation process and the longstanding relationship we have with both council and city leadership. Our intent is not to disrupt that relationship. This conversation isn't just about, isn't just about percentages or dollar amounts. It's about morale, retention, and recognition. Like police departments across the nation, we are facing serious challenges, from recruitment struggles to involving community needs. Tonight, we respectfully ask the council to match the five-point-eight percent offer that was extended to our fire department colleagues. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your continued support for public safety in the city of Orange.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Mr. David Jones.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm David Jones. I live at twenty-five-thirty Thunderbird, right close to, uh, Quick Road over to Tia's. I'm owner here of Gopher Industrial here in Orange County. Actually, originally started here in Orange on Park Street twenty-one years ago. We celebrated that birthday yesterday. We're, I'm involved in several boards. Some I serve with y'all as well. We hire local and probably invest in probably two-hundred-plus businesses in Orange over the years. I'm here to talk a little bit, just some comments about the energy around the tax increase. My comments will be taken as positive and end in positive nature. I want to say I appreciate every one of you and what you do and the sacrifices that you make to serve this county or the city. We know you're not making any money. Mr. Mayor Spears doesn't make enough money to cover his laundry costs and cleaning the socks for all the work he does every month. And we appreciate that. I appreciate what you do. And I would wash your feet, and I mean that, every one of you. I appreciate what you do, and it doesn't go without notice and the sacrifices that you take away from your families and all that. It means a lot. There's been a bunch of recent energy on Facebook, and I knew things were not maybe what they were, because I stay pretty in tune. I served on the Orange County EDC board, and I'm not here to represent them. But I didn't really realize it was as bad as it was, and I want to apologize for that. I know we're responsible. We can come here. We can be active. We can dig in. We can look through the minutes and stuff, and I apologize for not doing my part on that. But there is a point of frustration, and it comes down to what the narrative ended up being. All of a sudden, this thing came to a head super fast, and that's not the narrative that we need to have. I know there's been, I looked back through the notes, looked back through the minutes, and there was other times that it was talked about. But when there's parallel to that, all this other good, positive energy around it, it distracted us from the reality in the room. And I think we need to be careful about that as leaders. There's been tax incentives, EDC investments, a hundred thousand here, two hundred. We recently did one for four hundred thousand, one-point-five million, two million. Those are all great, and they may be warranted. I'm not here to debate those. But are they working? Is it the right thing? Are we forecasting? How far ahead are we looking? The annexation, the stuff with the major project here, there was, I was behind that until the language changed. I believe that issues didn't air soon enough, and I'm just speaking from the outside. It's posted on the bill, but you got to weed through it, and it caught us off guard. As a business owner, I've been through this. I've ran regions that are ten times the revenue that we take in here, my business. And when things are bad, we do layoffs, we do pay freezes. We have a plan for recovering. We went through COVID. I lost forty percent of revenue, and I had to adjust. I'm not saying don't do that or lay off or whatever. I don't know what the solution is. But there's a plan. There's not just, this is what we're doing for this budget, but we have, it might be a one-year, two-year, three-year, four-year plan, but we come together and work on solving those. And I recovered through that. But I spent three months sleeping on my floor at my business, working through that, making it happen, and surviving that situation. I never laid off one employee. I kept everyone employed. And the only thing I was concerned about was taking care of their families. And I saw there's some first responders here today, law enforcement. I appreciate what they do. If we can take care of them, let's take care of them. They're keeping us all safe and then out of harm's way. So I made a post on Facebook, sharing the story from Channel Twelve, and it's like, what's next? What are we doing? What are we going to do about it? At the time, the clock's up. We have to get a budget in, and we got to move forward. But I think we're better than this as a community. Do we project forecasts, bringing other business leaders like myself together, and not doing a rushed workshop, but taking time? We're going to have to put something in place because other comments, it's going to come again next year. It's going to take a little bit of time to get, I'm here. I would have liked to serve, but if I knew more and we were more, we didn't, I don't think it was intentional, because I know your hearts, but I think in a way, we created a false narrative that wasn't the reality, and we just missed it. I'm guilty, but I'm here to tell you that there's me and there's many other people that want to step up and help get this community through that. We are better than this. We don't need to take it to Facebook. We don't need to attack each other on Facebook. We all love each other. We want what's best, and we got to figure out how to come together and do that. Again, thank you very much for your sacrifices, your time, your time, and what you do away from your families.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and next we have Mr. William Hannan.
Good evening. My name is William Hannan, and I live at seven-oh-one West Orange Avenue in the historical district. Down in our neighborhood, we have a large number of stray cats running around. A son has given most of them nicknames. One cat in particular, Missy, has had three litters just this year in her favorite spot, under my house. I recently took her to Dr. Kelly's and had her spayed. I'm here tonight to voice my support for a trap neuter release ordinance to be introduced in Orange and also encourage the council to make her animal shelter a no-kill shelter. I think, I believe these steps will make a real difference for both the animals and for the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Those are all the names that we have on the list. Is there anyone else who'd like to come before council? Okay, if not, we will close the citizen comments, and we will move to item five, A, city staff announcements and city events.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Explore Orange Convention and Visitors Bureau is, we're ten days out from the fifth annual Orange Tober Festival, coming up October third through fifth, just next weekend. Hopefully, it's rained itself out. It'll be good weather next weekend, and we'll have a good time. On the schedule here, you can see that the gates open at four P M. on Friday. We'll have Circus Circus Variety Show. It'll be jugglers, acrobats, that sort of thing. Then Saturday is the big day, with starting with the pumpkin run, bright and early. We have the vendor market, cornhole tournament, gumbo cook-off, pumpkin pieing contest. Then we launch into the live music with a local band, Brandon Bennett Band, then with Claire Dunn, and then our headliner is a Texas country artist, William Clark Green. And then, of course, on Sunday, we have the Pumpkin Scramble. And this year, we're doing Pick of the Patch, so hopefully all the little kids can come and get a pumpkin from that as well. This is highly supported by the community. All of the activities that are done are done by different organizations within the community. United Way Rotary Club, Orange Lines Club, Texas AgriLife. The Big Pumpkin Run is three bros. Of course, we have VFW out there, Free State Sellers has come in. So it's just a great three-day weekend, family fun. Everything's free. So we hope to see everybody out there, and we look forward to seeing you and y'all coming and getting some pumpkins on Sunday.
All right, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to item six, Proclamation, Fire Prevention Week. Okay, so proclamation, Office of the Mayor. Whereas the city of Orange is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting our city, and whereas fire remains a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium-ion batteries in many household devices introduces a unique fire risk, and whereas most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium-ion batteries, which, if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. And whereas the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium-ion batteries, and whereas residents should follow three key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. And whereas lithium-ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space, and improper, and improper use. Whereas the city of Orange first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of fires through prevention, safety, education, and community outreach. And whereas the two thousand and twenty-five Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge Into Fire Safety Lithium Ion Batteries In Your Home", serves to remind us of the importance of using charging and recycling lithium-ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires. Now, therefore, I, Larry Spears, Jr., Mayor of the city of Orange, to hereby proclaim October fifth through eleventh as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Orange and urge all people to support many public safety activities and efforts by the local Orange Fire Department. Congratulations.
I guess the scene was trying to tell us how to put out fires, huh?
You run.
I know I remember the radio. Congratulations. Let's take a picture. I don't have one to shoot, but. I have a white shirt.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can cut it. Thank you.
As always, thank y'all for your continued support. I've got a little caveat. We, during Fire Prevention Week, we always have our open house, which is going to be October sixth, the day after Orange Tober finishes up. We will run an average of about six hundred people through Central Fire Station in about two hours. We have activities, station tours, they can climb all over the trucks. Decadent ambulants will be there. Yeah, Stark Museum. They'll have some people there, New Arts and Crafts, bounce houses, all kinds of fun stuff. So with that, I'm going to pass out some flyers. Y'all can push them out.
All the schools have been. How many invites have we sent?
Three thousand.
Three thousand invites.
Thank you, sir.
We did. Wait to see you in the bounce house.
I'll be waiting on my side.
We appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Okay, next we have item seven, the consent agenda. We have August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes. August twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five, Special Call Planning and Zoning Meeting Minutes. We have August twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-five, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes. September second, two thousand and twenty-five, Special Call City Council Meeting Minutes. And September ninth, two thousand and twenty-five, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? We have a motion in a second. Mr. Birch? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Chandler? Mr. Childs? Mr. Salter? Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. On to item eight, A, final reading. Consider an ordinance adopting a budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-five, and ending on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six, in accordance with the charter of the city of Orange, Texas, which requires a record vote. The first reading was September seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor. So this is just the final reading, the second reading, to approve and adopt the budget that was proposed.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna? Ms. Salter? Yes, sir? I didn't say it wasn't.
This is a hard seat to sit in. I feel like I'm sitting on a island by myself, trying to protect the citizens and employees at the same time. But I do have some thoughts, and like David Jones, I'd like to keep it very positive. We both have made this city grow. As I mentioned last week, I would like the employee raises to be stated, just like they say, just like they were put on the table. I promise, as the budget allow, I don't want that to change at all. But when you go through this budget and what's happening, if you take this right here, the tax rate is going up twenty-five percent. And I'll call it the actual tax rate. If you paid the tax from this house last year to this house this year by those numbers, you're paying twenty-five percent more in tax. The year before, it was seven-point-seven percent. We can handle seven-point-seven percent, but I don't know many people that are on fixed income that can come up with another three hundred dollars at the end of the year. That's why I make this point. You know, we're here for the citizens as well. So with that said, I had made a suggestion that we go into the reserve fund, and the reserve fund, as per city staff, projected cash balance ending this year is twenty million, four hundred. projected cash balance ending this year is twenty million, four hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars. And as per the legal department, T M L, council has the ultimate authority over reserve funds and how they're to be used. I would like to take this, uh, balance, and I would like to keep our tax rate the same as last year, point seven nine seven. So we're not increasing on anyone's homes this year, but we're still paying employees what we promised them. A sixty-five-year-old person's home is not locked in only with the city's school taxes. Their taxes will continue to increase with the city and the council, and, and the county. So, a sixty-five-year-old person can't afford a twenty-five percent increase. It's just logic for our, our constituents. You know, and there's people that aren't sixty-five years old, there's retired teachers, they don't make, they, they only have a retirement fund in the state of Texas. They haven't had a raise in seven years. We need to be considering everybody in the city. And I'm not sure why we're trying to stick to such a high tax rate. Again, I'm going by what I call an actual tax rate. Anybody that knows me can take this piece of paper I have on here and divide it out, it's twenty-five percent increase. Last year, you paid seven point seven percent higher in taxes. This year is twenty-five, so it'll be twenty-five percent. I don't know if anybody here can, can handle a twenty-five percent increase on their homeowner's tax. Uh, you know, we've talked about, I, I missed the workshop. I did miss workshop. I went back and played back some of the other workshops. Our workshops aren't workshops. I had questions, and I will dismiss when I start asking the questions during a workshop. So next year, I'll, our workshops are actually workshops, I mean, we ask questions, we get answers to them. So this doesn't happen in the future. You know, we're also talking, this is a home, what about the businesses? Is the business really gonna come here when they're gonna pay twenty-five percent more in taxes than the city limits of Orange? That, that, that doesn't make sense. Uh, you know, I've, I've said my piece, but my piece right now is we keep the employees' raises as stated, but we keep the tax rate as it was last year. Go into our twenty million, four hundred forty-one thousand projected gas cash balance at the end of this year, starting in twenty twenty-six, to make this balance with no increase in tax.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay. I just wanted to ask, 'cause I don't want you to think I was cutting you off.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Uh, just.
You have something?
Nothing more than, than as you know, the last time I spoke, I said I had a lot of angst in where we were at on this budget. Not because I, I think that people don't deserve their raises, that we're in a position, I think I, like Brad, in that case, support, uh, all that taking place in this budget. But at the same time, we do have to work on both sides. Uh, I had some information, one of the questions I asked in our last meeting was, okay, if we do not pass the tax rate, but pass the budget, what happens? And I was told that, that we must pass a tax rate to support the budget. That's what was said from that desk, okay? And when I heard that, that's when I said, okay, I'm voting for it, but with trepidation. I've looked at some more information, I would like to ask this desk one more time. Is that a fact? That if we want to, if we don't have a tax rate that supports, because everything I've read, that's not necessarily the case.
So in Texas, there is a balanced budget requirement. Texas law requires that municipalities adopt a balanced budget, meaning expenditures cannot exceed available revenues. A local government is prohibited from adopting a budget that leads to a deficit without specific provisions in their budget for covering shortfalls. When you take section one oh two point oh of seven, with your charter position, provision of six point oh seven C, which specifically says where, where it shall increase the total proposed expenditures, it shall also provide for an increase in the total anticipated revenue to at least equal such proposed expenditures. So you have to adopt the tax rate to support your budget, or in your budget state, you were going to be taking from reserves, which the current budget does not. Now, in Texas, on September thirtieth, a Texas city has to set the deadline for adopting a tax rate. If you do not adopt your tax rate, it will revert to either the no new revenue rate or the last year's proposed or last year's tax rate, whichever is lower. And the council then has to ratify it five days thereafter. Is actually not an adopted or just forced to do that.
That's, that's why I had my question, because once again, uh, we're, we're at a point right now that this is gonna be a big burden on our citizens, and it, it creates a lot of issues along the way. Uh, first for, yes, for some of those folks that are, uh, in homes that are not valued that much, that are on fixed incomes, it's going to, it's gonna be an effect upon them. But it's also gonna be an effect for those that have homes that literally afford to pay the tax. I can afford to pay the tax. But I also know that if you don't love this city, the way some people may not, they would be easily be able to afford also to move out of this city into the county and some other places, which then turns around and puts the burden back more again on those individuals that can't afford to pay the tax, can't afford to move, can't afford to do those things. We also have a lot of wonderful things getting ready to take place in our town, and I am so excited about them. But you also have to remember, those things are at a point right now that they are looking at the economics of their projects. And when you start looking at the economics of projects, and we have done what we can do as a city, as an E D C, to encourage, to bring those people into our community. And they're excited to be able to work with us, but when they look at those economics, the issue becomes, guess what? What we were looking at a month ago is now gonna go up significantly. We're gonna have to relook at that and see, does it still make sense? And folks, I, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about that. I want the very best for each and every one of our employees. I want the very best for our staff, I want the very best for our community. Whatever direction this takes, I will roll up my sleeves and we will work at it to make some of the conclusions that came about from what we saw in the budget not happen. I know that's not our city manager's wishes either. He wants to be wrong like I wanna be, I wanna make sure we're wrong. But there are issues that could happen, and we could be in the same place, but not as even as good a place as this one year from now. And that bothers me. Also, I would like just one more mention, real quick. On the contents of the budget, I know it wasn't in this budget, but I think it's something that we need to see. Under s- section six oh five, contents of the budget, under number five, it says tax levies and tax collections by years for at least ten years should be included. Uh, I think we saw two years, maybe three?
No, there's a chart in the back that shows ten.
Yeah, there is ten?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I just totally missed it, and if it's there.
It's in the very last section.
My bad, and I apologize. Thank you very much.
From page one forty?
What page?
One forty.
She said.
Okay, I missed it.
You did too.
Very good. Thank you so much for that.
Am I correct in what T M L gave me advice from legal? That the files say on using the, uh, reserve is up to the city council, we can make this balance with a vote from city council?
I cannot speak to what T M L stated or what they referred to. Since you are a home role municipality, your charter provisions are gonna control, but I don't know whether or not the T M L attorney that you spoke with have read your charter provisions.
Okay, Mr. Burge, I guess we're going down the line. I'm sorry, Ms. McKenna, did you have anything you wanted to say? I know you made a motion, but did you have anything you wanted to say? Okay, Mr. Burge, Mr. Chandler?
Just so we're clear, this is a, an approval, not a chance to change.
Right.
Right, this is the, yes, it's a final reading.
Uh, just want to clarify what Brad had asked. So had this suggestion been considered before with using reserves before the first reading? Then by provision, we could have included that as long as it stayed in the budget, is that correct? To help balance that budget?
Potentially. Like I stated, Texas has a balanced budget requirement. You look at your charter in connection with one oh two, your charter provides that you have to have revenue at least equal to the proposed expenditures. And it also states in section six point eight, six point oh eight B, that, uh, from the effective date of the budget, the amount stated therein has the amount to be raised by property tax shall constitute the amount that you're going to levy. So your charter trumps Texas law, you're a home role municipality. So hypothetically, yes, you could go to reserves, but your charter states that you have to levy according to the budget. Now, earlier in the workshops, if you all would have saw a large drop, you could have potentially looked at the reserves, but I don't know when you say twenty million in reserves, some of those are restricted funds, bond funds, et cetera. But yes, next budget year, we can look at that.
T M L pointed out that this isn't due till the twenty-seventh, so it still can be worked on until the twenty-seventh.
We do not have a posted meeting for September twenty-seventh, and now with the Open Meetings Act, where you have to post three full business days prior, we cannot have another meeting to meet our September twenty-seventh deadline. And therefore, if you don't vote on this today, the proposed budget will be deemed approved. And you cannot, and you.
Reverse to the point seven.
Well, if you don't approve your budget, we can't even go to the tax rate. So then, you have to have a meeting September thirtieth to ratify, or basically to ratify the tax rate from last year.
So with that said, we can help people at home that cannot pay this.
That's not what I said. I said if you all don't adopt the budget today, the budget as proposed will be deemed adopted. Then you, we would have to post, and then on September thirtieth, the only choice you will have is to ratify the tax rate that you had last year. Because September thirtieth is the drop, dead date for you to adopt a tax rate, and in Orange, you have to have two readings, so you're gonna pass that time due to the new Open Meetings Act requirements for posting.
But again, if both yes to the budget and no to the tax rate?
You can vote however you would like, however.
Okay, Ms. Salter?
Thank you all for coming out, and I wanna thank Cheryl and Coons for, for meeting with me a million times. And, and taking all my phone calls, for me to really try to understand what we have going on. One of the things that I, I brought to, uh, the attention of everyone last time is the budget that is being proposed. And my question was, does this number balance our budget? And that answer was no, right? The, 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 the number that Brad, the, the number that he wants to keep, the point seven nine seven. It will not budget.
That's correct.
Right, so that's the problem we run into, so. I know we see a lot of things on Facebook about how we're not caring, we all care. That's why we're here, every single one of us care about the people here. So I don't want you all, you guys, no matter what the decision is that we all make, we're trying to do what we feel, and our heart is best, best for the people. Um, so I'm kinda torn too, uh, you guys, because if that number does not balance us, we have a problem. And yet, the other number, which, thank you, Mayor, because he stood up. He went to the, he went and met with Cheryl and Coons, and he took it, uh, step further, and he come up with that number. So thank you, Mayor, because
Thank you.
we just could not come up with that number. I could have threw out a number, but I don't want to do that. I don't wanna do that to the people. So, but we do have to, to do something. What it is, but, but thank you.
Thank you.
So let me say this, I, I have contemplated on what to say, I have prayed about what to say. If you're in this room and you do not like me anymore, it's okay. If you're in this room and you do like me, it's okay. This seat, if, until you sit in this seat, you will never understand what it's like. I'm not asking for nothing for nobody, I don't want nobody to feel sorry for me, I'm fixing to say what I have to say. I am not calling anybody out. I have read the comments, I have read what has been said about me and about others. Everybody up here cares. If we did not care, we would not be here. This is what I want you to hear, though. Mr. Jones, thank you for coming. I do like how when you made a post, it leaves you have the intestinal fortitude to come up here and say a few words positively. Here's what I want you to understand, and I know that you, you get it, you're a business. The E D C and things that have been talked about have nothing to do with this budget. It's a separate intentional budget to help promote growth, okay? Thank you, Ms. Salter, for what you said, because what I'm, I'm not defending myself, I am speaking facts. Just like you said, I would like to speak because it's your right, that's a fact. I was not trying to overlook you. You are always able to say whatever you want. I am not against you, Mr. Childs. I am not against anyone up here. But what Ms. Salter is referring to is, once the book came out, August sixth, we received the numbers from the county tax person. Once we received it in August, they have to hurry up and scramble. This is not their fault, this is not our fault. Once we received it August sixth, right?
Received our values.
Once we put everything together, it was August sixth.
August sixth, we posted, yeah.
Since August sixth, we met August twelfth, August nineteenth, August twenty-fifth, August twenty-sixth, September second, September ninth, September tenth, September seventeenth, there was five special call meetings. Uh, my daughter is a senior, and I missed five or six of her games. And all of these meetings, this is not to call, this is all of us, right, this is all of us. Do, do we have anything? What was said? Please, answer for me. Nothing. September sixth, September seventeenth was when we were finally had some suggestions, and some were found to not be able to be done. So of the other seven previous meetings, I, as mayor, do not always want to look like I'm trying to run everything. So what does the people want? What do you want? Most of you were not here. Now that it is the midnight hour, we do have some more suggestions. Could we have pulled from restricted funds, from the things that are not locked up? Mr. Childs is right. If we would have thought about that ahead of time, we could have said, let's take this out of the budget, this out of the budget, this out of the budget, pay for them with reserves, you're right. And then, we could take it out of the budget, so it's actually not being balanced from reserves, correct? Because if it's not paid for from the budget, but it's paid from, for reserves away from the budget, it's not being balanced by budget. I was always under the impression that we cannot balance from the reserves, did not think to look that far ahead to think that maybe we could have done it that way. Now that's something that we're learning, okay? So going forward, I am not against anybody. Going forward, this is a very difficult position for all of us. I am not happy with what I read off of Facebook about me. I am not happy with people threatening me and saying things about this is the end for you. Because what you see around the globe today, you don't say that right now. Mr. Charlie Kirk, God rest his soul, you don't play like that right now. Okay, so this is something that we do for barely, I lose money, I know y'all all lose money, so here we are, we've gotta figure it out. Whatever vote happens tonight, we're gonna leave from here as a team. A team. When I'm done, I hope that this entire time, that you have felt that we have been unified by Christ. That we have grown as a city. Inclement situations are gonna happen. Don't you understand that when scripture gives you something, it wasn't for you just to read it? He said, "Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of death, I will fear no evil." He didn't say it was gonna always be easy. He told you that, and this is where we are. So let's make our decision, cast our vote, but when we leave from here, we are a team. Thank you, Mr. Mortimer. And I respect everybody's vote. If it gets so screwed up, Ms. Kate, that we got to go all the way back, and then we gotta make two million in cuts, guess what we gonna do? We gonna figure. We gonna figure it out. Because that's what we've done. Now, with that being said, we had one motion, do I have a second? Well, it was you the one that made the motion, Ms. McKenna, I'm sorry.
I made the motion.
Oh, he did, I'm sorry. Mr. Birch, Ms. McKenna, I have a motion and a second, so I'm sorry. You know, I love you, I'm sorry. I love your pink house too, okay? And this is only on the budget. I'm not, I haven't read anything else. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
And I say aye as well.
Now, consider a motion ratifying that the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty five, and ending on September thirtieth, twenty two to twenty six. Will raise more total property taxes than last year's budget by an amount of eighty-nine thousand twenty-nine dollars. Which is a point, zero point nine three percent increase from last year's budget. The property tax revenue to be ra, to be raised from new property added to the tax roll is a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Four hu, one fifty-four, four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Ms. Zito.
So this motion is just to ratify that the budget, you acknowledge the budget raises eighty-nine thousand twenty-nine dollars more than last year's budget. Revenue, point oh nine three percent increase, that's all.
Okay, do we have, do we want to talk about that? I'm sorry, before I ask for a motion. Okay, do we have a motion? Okay? We have a motion, do we have a second? Okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All right, so Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter? This is ratifying the budget.
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Childs? Okay, Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well. Okay, on to the next one. Eight B, consider an ordinance making a tax levy and fixing the maintenance and operations tax rate. Debt service tax rate and total tax rate for the city of Orange, Texas for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty five. And ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty six, upon all taxable property in the city of Orange, Texas on January first, twenty twenty five. According to the laws of Texas, the charter provisions and the ordinances of the city of Orange, Texas. And providing that the said taxes levied shall be collected requires a record vote. The first reading was September seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Ms. Zito.
So this is just the final reading, the, the second reading to adopt, approve and adopt a tax rate? And this one is at the point eight six seven.
Okay?
Point what?
Eight six seven, that the, that was proposed by the mayor and that's what the budget, it, it supports the budget that you just approved.
Is it the tax rate that supports the budget that we-
Yes, yes sir, it supports the budget.
Is this a, uh, simple majority?
Yes, just four.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Motion?
Okay? Okay, we have a motion and a second? Okay, so Mr., I'm sorry, Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Bear with me, I-
Yes, no ma'am, I'm not, like I told everybody before. I have nothing against nobody, I'm here to listen.
Just a follow-up you guys for me. Like I said, I've, I've been there for the numbers come up with. You're not up to- That number is too high for me. I just, I, I can't go with that number.
While we're ready, what I would say is, please know, um- In reference to the number that was brought up, it was because when we asked council, where would we like to go? Budget cuts had to be made and numbers had to be presented. So the point eight six seven was not just a number that I came up with. It was after the cuts that had been proposed. And then I came in and sat down and looked over what we proposed and added to the cuts to make us, to help us get below the no new tax revenue rate. That's where the number ended up. So it wasn't like I just rolled over at two AM and said, that's the number. It was because of, uh, looking at what was cut and then what was left, and that's the number that supported that.
I will say this. What he just said is the truth. I did go speak to Ms. Zito and Mr. Coons and I did question where that number came from and how he did come up with that number. That's why it was important that we did not just throw out a number, okay? So, um. Although, like I said, um. I'm gonna, Lord, um. Just know, I'm, I'm going to have to say. Sorry. I can't, um. It's going to have to be a no for me.
Okay?
We need, I just feel like there is a number. There is a number. But that's not the number. Neither one of these numbers are sufficient. And I, and I'm so concerned about those who just can't pay. Someone has to look out for those people. I think if we have done, if we would have done something different, and we're learning up here, things occur. This is something different that we've never ever experienced. So just bear with us, um, and, and thank you again.
Okay? All right, so we have, uh, next, Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Chandler?
I'm with Terry, this is a very difficult vote. And we're at the, the end of the year, the fourth quarter, um. And I'll steal from George from last week, I'd love people to say yes.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Uh, after, after lots of thought, prayer and everything else, uh, at this particular time, I'm gonna have to just say no.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay? All right, so right now we have a three-three vote and it gets to come down to me. Thank you all, I appreciate that.
Just, uh, power of your vote, I just want you to know that, uh, I, I will be with you in all cases, whether what it is. Uh, I just had to put my conscience with guys leading me on that because I want to make sure we're here. Uh, a year from now, I'm not having the same discussion at this point. So just, and I believe, I don't want to speak for everyone here, but I believe everyone here will be the same way.
Okay? I, and I appreciate that, Mr. Mortimer, I just. There's things that I want to say, but I'm not really going to. Ms. Salter, like you said, thank you. Um, but I, I, when you say like, or when people say, someone has to take care of the people. I thank you for saying that, we all do.
Yeah, I'm not saying it.
Yes ma'am, no, no, I'm not arguing. But what I'm saying is, as the mayor, I have got to find a way to make the city work. I wish that I had the luxury to say no, because now that y'all heard that it can be four-three. Three of you get to say no, and now we are all the, the ones that say yes are now all the bad people in Orange tonight. Yes, that is going to happen. But somebody has to make a budget work. If I say no right now, now we have to go through and find a way to go cut two million. And the problem that I have, y'all, is that I asked on August twelfth, nineteenth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, September second, September ninth, September tenth, and September seventeenth. What did y'all want? And nothing was said. And now that it's the midnight hour, if I vote no, we have to go figure out where to go cut two million dollars or whatever, whatever it's going to end up being. But if I say yes, I get crucified again.
Do what God puts in your-
No, I know what God put in my heart, he put me here for a posi, he put me here for a reason. Because somebody's got to have the intestinal fortitude to take care of business when it's not always fun. I'm gonna have to say yes, because I don't know how we're going to get through all of this in the next five or six days. To figure it all out, we've already had five special call meetings, what more, what more? So I'm gonna say yes. Thank you, Mr. Mortimer, for what you said. I'll just be the guy, once again, it is what it is, I thank God for the opportunity. With that being said, you have a four-three vote. On to item nine, A, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Skywonder Pyrotechnics in the amount of forty-two thousand five hundred. To host a fireworks show for the Fourth of July celebration. Ms. Williams?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, as a part of the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of America's independence. We are planning a fireworks show and concert for July fourth, twenty twenty-six. Um, we request approval, uh, to contract with Skywonder, in which they are a state licensed company. Um, and since the state does not permit hotel occupancy tax, to cover this expense, this would require funding from the council's budget.
I'll turn it over to you.
So does anybody have anything? So we have to pull this from where again, please?
It is in the budget.
It's in the budget.
It's already budgeted, you budgeted fifty thousand.
Okay.
It's already in the budget. So we came in under budget.
Oh, so you saved the seventy-five hundred? There we go, okay, good.
Motion that we accept.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna? Okay, thank you. On to item nine B, consider a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign a reimbursement agreement with Union Pacific. In the amount of two hundred thousand for relocation of city water and sewer facilities servicing the Low Edition and Cypresswood subdivisions. Mr. Jack?
Good evening, Council. Um, Union Pacific Railroad is expanding their tracks in the vicinity of Tulane Road. And under a nineteen-seventy agreement that we have, uh, we have city facilities that will be in conflict with that work. And our nineteen-seventies agreement says that we are required to relocate those two utilities at our cost. Uh, through some negotiations with Union Pacific, we were able to convince them to enter into a cost sharing, uh, participation program. Where we will split the costs of the relocation fifty-fifty with Union Pacific Railroad. They have accepted bids and the amount of the dollar figure to relocate of both the water and the sewer line is four hundred thousand dollars. Under this agreement, we will pay two hundred thousand, they will pay two hundred thousand. And we will share, uh, fifty percent of any unforeseen costs that may come up. Um, the agreement before you, uh, enters into that financial agreement as well as new pipeline agreements to, uh, cross the railroad at the new location. Staff recommends approval.
Do you have any questions or comments for Mr. Jack? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
We have a motion in a second, Ms. McKenna? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Motion passes, thank you, Mr. Jack. Item nine E. Nine C, consider a resolution awarding a contract to Texas Materials Group in the amount of five-hundred-and-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five for the White Oak Road wo, roadway rehabilitation project. Ms. Floyd?
Uh, Ms. Floyd is absent, I'm filling in for her, Mr. Mayor. Uh, the scope of work includes road rehabilitation, it was on the priority list, uh, for this year. Uh, as we looked into the roadway, we realized we were going to have to do much more extensive work than originally anticipated. Uh, and since we were also going to be tearing up the road, we decided to add some additional fire hydrants down White Oak Road for emergency services. Uh, their engineer's estimate was five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars when we went out to bid. We received two bids, with the lowest being from Texas Materials out of Beaumont, who also did the Tulane Road work and the Twenty-seventh Street work. Uh, their bid was five-hundred-and-five-thousand-eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, and that was a little bit less than what we originally, I think it was like originally six-twenty-five or something like that?
At one point, we had six-twenty-five, I think the most recent, uh, presentation we gave you was about three-hundred-and-eighty-seven. Um, but again, we did not anticipate the, the repairs that were needed underneath the asphalt to be as extensive as they were.
Right.
So.
Good, will somebody please call everybody on that street and tell them, here it comes?
I'll let them make the motion to approve.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna? Okay, my, motion passed.
Mayor, did, did you tell them the timeline for the-
I did not. Uh, right now, we anticipate to meet with the pro, or the, uh, contractor later next week. In order to give them a, just proceed and advance the project in October.
All right.
Yeah, usually takes about a month. Did it mobilize about a month?
To mobilize about a month and hopefully we can get them to do it a little bit faster. We've, uh, we've explained to them our concern, um, tried to do it a little bit quicker. I anticipate the work will take probably three weeks or so.
Okay.
Maybe a little bit, maybe a little bit less. It'll be a little bit tumultuous, you know, being down the one lane, out there with the school bus and, but such is getting the road fixed, so.
And I will advise, before you step away, thank you, Mr. Jack.
Of course.
For those of you who are responsible for that area, before, um, we go too far and there is not a clear understanding. Please invite those citizens to speak with City Hall or Mr. Jack, because there are some parts of that road that are not the city's. And so before we get ripped apart on that, please do your due diligence and let them know, um, what is, what all is actually going to happen to that road. So thank you, Mr. Jack.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to item ten, A, consider a motion appointing or reappointing blank to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Knopf?
There are two terms on the Historic Preservation Commission that have now expired. And we have eight applicants, uh, for appointment or reappointment to that commission. And those applicants are Reginald Broussard, Sarah Brown, Tyler Ditsen, William Hannan, Caleb Harris, Jerry Sawyer, Kenneth Wheeler, and Dustin Yu.
I have a question. Does the two, uh, open states wish to retain their seats?
Yes, they do, I found that out.
Okay.
Oh, is there one?
That's, uh-
Yeah, the other word, we reappoint-
William Hannan. I, I would like to reappoint, uh, Kenneth Wheeler.
Well, we need to pick him one another time.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Item ten B, consider a motion appointing or reappointing blank to the Historic Preservation Commission for a term ending September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-seven. Mr. Knopf?
Uh, same thing.
Okay?
She nominated, will you?
Okay, we have a nomination in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Childs?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Mortimer?
Aye.
Mr. Birch?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Knopf. Item ten C, consider a motion acknowledging the review and adoption of the amended purchasing policy for the city of Orange. Ms. Zito?
Yes, Mayor. So, um, the, uh, Texas Legislature passed Senate Bill eleven-seventy-three, which is a bill that, um, increased the threshold from purchases that the city makes. That if it's over a certain threshold, you have to do competitive bidding, RFP and all that. Um, they graced it from fifty thousand to one hundred thousand. So I had to adjust our policy, that's the only change in our policy, um, at this time. So I had to adjust our policy. That's the only change in our policy, um, at this time. So I had to adjust our policy to meet the new law.
Okay, any questions or comments? If not, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Chandler? Mr. Childs? Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Onto item ten D, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the Orange Economic Development Corporation's proposed budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Ms. Zito?
So this is the proposed budget for the EDC, which we went over earlier at the EDC meeting. If y'all wanna go over it again, the basic, um, increases were, um, salaries, same, uh, increases as general government gets, four percent COLA in a step, um, increased Jay's allowance, um, increased legal, uh, consultant, and other capital outlay for some repairs at City Hall.
Can we have a motion in a second, Mr. Burge? Mr. Mortimer? Mr. Chandler? Mr. Childs? Ms. Salter? Ms. McKenna? Okay, motion passes. Number item eleven A, city manager report.
Mayor, Council, uh, there will be a joint meeting. We're all prior to meetings, but sent out the notices and posted the, uh, sent the letters to the property owners. So again, apologize for all that, the city of business keeps on. So there'll be a joint planning with zoning commission and city council, public hearings. Tuesday, October seventh at five-thirty here in the chambers. Uh, we got, we need public input on a, uh, some proposed ordinances. That includes prohibited game rooms, amusement redemption machines in the city, rezoned part of the west side of Sixteenth Street, so a multi-use zoning district, mixed-use zoning unit. And MZB allow for county home villages in certain zoning districts to reduce the minimum lot size requirement for tiny home villages in certain zoning districts. Amendment COVID ordinances to comply with the new state law on home-based businesses. And amendment COVID ordinances to comply with the new state law on the post-assignment property being considered for rezoning. So if you would tomorrow or this evening, check your calendars, let Tricia or Jennifer know. Uh, also, a lot of conversation about, uh, conversation and input on the, the budget process. So I will ask you at our next meeting, and the fourteenth, so again, budget doesn't stop. Uh, so for fiscal year twenty-twenty-seven, think about what you think you would like to do for the staff and, and citizens of the public, y'all, what can we do differently? Do you want to start with, you know, some education, some, some, this is what, you know, the, the Orange County Appraisers, this is how they do appraisals. This is what those tax rates mean and what those, how we get those, uh, from, uh, the Texas S S. This is kind of a process. What are your thoughts moving forward? You know, we talked about, uh, a few weeks ago about some public improvement projects. We talked about pulling some stuff out of the, the, uh, reserve fund for fiscal year twenty-six. So we need some input on that. Now, the big thing is gonna be, when are we gonna do that? Do y'all wanna have separate standalone meetings? Do you wanna do it part of the regular meeting? So we're gonna need some of y'all's input to do that. Again, I realize it's a terrible time to ask, but we just came out of about two months of meeting every week, and sometimes twice a week. But to get there, to get from here to there, we need some of y'all's input and probably some of your time and how we're gonna get that accomplished. So think about that. And then lastly, uh, happy birthday to Jennifer Poole up there in the chutes.
Okay, thank you. City Council report, starting with Ms. McKenna. Okay, Mr. Childs?
I had no idea it was your birthday. Happy birthday. And, uh, thank you for what you just said, Mike. I think it's pretty much needed.
Okay, Mr. Mortimer?
Uh, I just wanna say, I, I know a meeting like this, you see that how this council struggles with all those things that are taking place. And, uh, yet at the same time, I believe we love each other and we really care. And one of the things I wanna make sure that I, and I look at, when it goes to Facebook, which I'm not a big fan of, never have been, never will be probably, I guess that's part of my age. But I look in First Corinthians, chapter eight, the very first verse there basically says, and this is what we see with Facebook, is sometimes they have some knowledge, I don't know what it says. Knowledge alone makes people self-righteously arrogant. But love that unselfishly seeks the best for others builds up and encourages others to grow. We need to grow as a community and as a city, uh, as a s- as a, as a council. So thank you for bearing with us through this process. It's no fun, but we're gonna win.
Thank you. Mr. Burge?
Cheryl, to you and your department, thank you very much. I know it was not easy. It's hard. But, um, and Mike, you as well, thank you. Uh, Mayor, y'all struggled to get us where we were at today. I mean, it's not been easy. And I wholeheartedly appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Mr. Chandler?
I agree with you, Charles. Thank you for the budget. Uh, I feel it's been really good for us for next year. And thank you, George, for your comments. Uh, I think it's very timely and, and well-received. Um, actually, as a part of my work here, I had a agenda update. I submitted a request a while back for some properties in Rosemont, we're having some issues in our yard. And so, um, some people came out about four months ago, but nothing else has been done since then. So if I could get an update on our yard of that, I was asked about it today at lunch. And so I'd like to get some, some feedback on that. That's all I have.
Okay, Ms. Salter?
Uh, I just wanna thank everybody again and thank all the wonderful staff that worked really hard on all of this. Um, I had a, uh, a gentleman contact me and I'll be reaching out to send a name, a name. Um, they're having some, um, some, I think some financial issue, some things going on. And, uh, what is it? Some say, so I'll send you that information. I'll email that information.
All right, thank you. Also, I wanna thank everybody again. Um, this is a definitely, uh, we've been here before. This happens every year with certain issues. Um, I do wanna go back because, uh, once again, Mr. Jones, I just wanna thank you for what you said. I didn't wanna, there was one part I forgot. It hit us like bricks. Cause what happened, if anybody would like to go back and watch the wonderful presentation from Ms. Zito, when we got our numbers, was it a hundred and fifty million or a hundred and seventy million? So what happened was the devaluation of our industrial district agreements is what put us in this bind out of nowhere. So it wasn't from us like overspending or being crazy with it. We had to all, we had to hurry up and adjust to something we had no control over. Those entities are still paying us. They're just not having to pay us as much because their properties aren't valued as much as they used to be. So you were right. It got hit with bricks. So I'm gonna take your recommendation. Everybody should have already known that they're welcome, but if I have to get on Facebook and do a live, I'mma call it out. We will start, Mr. Coons, we will start in January. We're going to start our first week in January when we come back. And what we will do is I will come sit down with you. I will put the agenda item on here. And I will have it set up to where we can invite every entity that is a part of taxation, the county, the school board, the, um, the, the appraisal district. We will inva- invite them to come between January and September thirtieth to make a presentation on how they affect taxpayers and what part we need to understand as citizens. The Bible says, my people perish for a lack of knowledge. So if we need to find ways to continue to, uh, to educate, then we will. We will start in January. If I have to go on Facebook Live before every meeting to make sure everybody gets a chance to hear it, that way if we get here again next year, I'm not doing this. Okay? I love y'all, but I'm not gonna keep doing this every year. Everybody's welcome. Everybody's able to come. I understand it. But if I can make a sacrifice, if you're that concerned, you can have your behind here too. So we're gonna start in January, okay? We start in the February, cause I even went found it in the minutes where I first asked, what all did we want? So now we'll start in January and we'll see where we get next year. With that being said, we will now adjourn to close executive session. We have a lot of things tonight, so if you wanna hang out outside and talk about what you just saw, then you can. Um, you, we have a negotiation with the Association of Firefighters, one with the police, and one about regarding acquisition of easement of Lot Seventeen, Block Four of the Low Edition on the thirty-third, Forty-third Street in Orange, Texas. At this time, you can hang out outside and we'll reconvene when, uh, we're done. Thank y'all.
There is, uh, such as thirteen A, take action as necessary regarding items twelve A one, twelve A two and twelve A three. There is no action plan or motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second only favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.